The City of Detroit Lakes, the city of Detroit Lakes, we have a private conference to hold, but we present the House of Representatives. The City of Detroit Lakes, due to the government being held on campus, or by other local authorities, in Minnesota's statute of attorney and attorney-in-law, members of the public, which will be virtually, should still be pressed into the City of Detroit Lakes. The City of Detroit Lakes, also meeting this evening, will be a hybrid meeting, taking place with two options, you can attend in person, or you can start at the center of the hall, or you can attend virtually by his attorney-in-law's decision. And so with that, I'll call the order, regular meeting of the Detroit Lakes City Council, and at this time, I'd like to invite you all to rise and join me in settling the political tensions with the presidential leaders to the platform, and then escape from America, and to the role of the representative, of the nation, of our God, and of his little liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And this evening, we have two firefighters I'd like you to introduce to, and I'd like to ask Adam Ryan. Do you want the podium, please? So this evening, we have Ryan Schuetti and Adam Schindler to firefighters, and I'm going to administer to them their firefighter of office. So if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Ryan Schuetti.
Promise that I will humbly serve.
I'll promise to humbly serve.
All customers with an urgent response.
All customers with an urgent response.
To their crisis.
To their crisis.
With compassion, sincerity, and concern.
Compassion, sincerity, and concern.
Patience, kindness, and respect.
Patience, kindness, and respect.
I promise that I will, at all times.
I promise that I will, at all times.
Conduct myself in a manner.
Conduct myself in a manner.
That reflects positively.
That reflects positively.
On the fire department and the City of Detroit Lakes.
Fire department and the City of Detroit Lakes.
Finally, I promise to follow. All states of the fire department. uphold the laws of our state and nation.
uphold the laws of our state and nation.
And the ordinances of the City of Detroit Lakes.
And the ordinances of the City of Detroit Lakes.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
All right, congratulations, Ryan and Adam. Charlie? Well, first, I open the agendas and meetings of four little events in the regular State Council meeting on March 10, 2021, and the special State Council meeting on March 22, 2021. It's really one of my ideas to start having the council, which is either add or actually adding more minutes, doesn't it, right? Here it now, I'm taking motion for approval.
I still move.
For the main second, to approve minutes of the regular State Council meeting on March 9, and a special State Council meeting on March 22. Discussion? To the vote of all, Ziegman?
Aye.
Lai?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Marcus Harrison?
Aye.
Oki?
Aye.
Domon?
Aye.
Motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council. All items of the master list are considered to be routine in this City Council, and will be enacted by the House of Representatives. There will be no separate discussion of these items, unless a council member or citizens will request, which in any case will be approved in general or at least considered separately as normal sequence on the agenda. As a reminder on the audience who are moving to the council, it wishes to add or remove the item with the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as a running.
I still move.
Second.
Motion to the main second to approve the consent amendment discussion. Vote all vote, Domon?
Aye.
Oki?
Aye.
Marcus Harrison?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Ziegman?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are up to the community development committee agenda, called Chairman Josephson.
I made a discussion there in the House of Representatives Council, a discussion about us adopting a new council group, and perhaps maybe I think we'll see some more of that happen in the next month or so. I need to make this discussion very memorable, the City Attorney, very extraterritorial subdivision ordinance. This is something that the city staff and some of the council members have been working on for two, two and a half years, and we may have seen some information in paper mode, but this evening, we're going to have the City Attorney can explain some backstory and some of the goings on, so I'll turn things over to the City Attorney in Grand Street.
All right, let's see. Work? Okay. Not too bad, all right, thanks. I gave a fairly long explanation of this at the community development council meeting yesterday, our community, and I'm going to try to shorten it up just a little bit, but I hope all of you have had a chance to review my memorandum letter in April 7. As I think all of you know, we have been engaged over the past two years with some discussions, first with Becker County and some of the townships, and continuing over a period of time in order to different discussions regarding the application of the city's subdivision ordinance to what we call the extraterritorial area. Basically, there's a Minnesota state statute that authorizes municipalities to extend their subdivision controls to an area outside of the city limits of the city that extends two miles from the boundary to the city. That subdivision authority is not new. The City of Detroit Lakes has been doing that since 1960, so by my calculation, about 61 years. At first, it was based upon a statute that authorized the cities to provide plat approvals, so any plat outside of the two mile, or outside of the city of Minnesota within the two mile zone, had to gain city approval, and the city had an ordinance to that effect. In 1965, the state revised the statutes and adopted what we have today, which is called the Minnesota Planning Act, it's in chapter 462 of Minnesota statutes, and it contains a similar provision, it just allows municipalities to not only have a plat approval, but also any subdivision control, so approval of any subdivision on land within the two mile territorial area. That started in 1965, the city adopted ordinance that was consistent with that new statute, I believe in 1967, and since that time, we've been exercising subdivision control within that two mile zone. Within the last couple of years, there's been some dissatisfaction expressed, first by the county, with Eastern County, and some of the townships with the way they were administering that and with the application of some of the controls. You may recall that in response to that back in 2019, in the late portion of that year, we had met with some of the county and township officials and had listened to their concerns and proposed some changes to our subdivision ordinance. I'm not going to go through all those changes, one of their major concerns was the park dedication fees, and so we agreed that we would tear that, and there were another number of other proposed changes that were in response to their concerns, or it's what we thought what we're told their concerns were. And we actually had a first meeting of that proposed subdivision ordinance, but before we proceeded to second meeting, we were informed that, you know, those changes were not satisfactory or not enough, I don't know how to characterize it, in case there was a question or issue whether that would satisfy those concerns, and so we put the brakes on it. We never did have a second meeting on subdivision control ordinance change. Since then, we've been proceeding along, have had various discussions, I know that members of the council have had some discussions, have gone to meetings at the county, and, you know, that process has been somewhat difficult in that we are, you know, having a difficult time finding exactly what changes would be sufficient from the standpoint of the townships and county. And late this 2020, early 2021, in response to some of those meetings, we drafted another, which I shouldn't say would be necessarily, Kelsey did most of the work, but I contributed to some degree, another proposed change, some more, some different changes, changes that would try to address the townships' expressed concern to have some involvement in the process. And those changes were drafted, I don't know that they were ever reviewed by the planning commission or the city council, because at that point, I think the townships kind of expressed that they really, that they were mostly concerned with just not having a decision to do anything to do with subdivision controls outside of the two mile zone, so in effect, wanting to change what had been, you know, the status quo for the past 60 years. And so that ordinance, I don't know, it was given to some of the township officials, I don't know if it was ever, that those proposals, proposals from February of this year, I don't know that they were ever really reviewed by the townships. A lot at the same time, they expressed the fact that they were considering adopting their own subdivision controls ordinances, and so that focused our attention on that possibility, and so we did some research about, you know, what the status of the law was with regard to do that. I discovered that there was a 1967 Attorney General opinion, Minnesota Attorney General, that related to the city of Benson, that actually said that once the city had expanded its territorial subdivision controls, the township would have the power to do so within that two mile zone, but in any case, the city's subdivision controls were not superseded. And since that issue is basically what it appears to be dealing with, we decided to make another request to the Minnesota Attorney General, just to see whether there was anything that was changed with regard to that, that 1967 opinion. We did make a request for a Attorney General opinion, the Attorney General responded and just, essentially declined to make any changes to the 1967 opinion, declined to issue one other opinion, and in fact, in their response, they included a copy of the 1967 Attorney General opinion, essentially confirming that, you know, at least from my perspective, is still their view of the status of the law. So, I think where we're at in this is that the townships appear to be proceeding under the assumption anyway, that by adopting their own subdivision controls ordinances, their ordinances would supersede the city's control within that two mile zone, and as I just indicated, the law doesn't support that assumption at all, and in fact, what law is out there, you know, goes the other way, and questions whether the township's subdivision controls would be effective within that two mile zone, but in any case, confirms that the city's subdivision controls would remain in effect. The consequence of that, I think, though, should be to some degree concerning to all of us, we could simply say, okay, well, our subdivision controls are in the state place, it wouldn't do anything, but from the perspective of the landlord owners within that two mile zone, you know, they're facing the possibility of not only having to comply with the city's subdivision controls ordinances, but a second set of subdivision controls adopted by the township, again, whether or not they are in effect within that two mile zone, the township wants or not, is maybe a debatable question, and there could end up being some litigation about that, but it just seems to me that from a public policy standpoint, it's, it would be really unfortunate if landlord owners within that area had to comply with two separate subdivision ordinances, one administered by the city, the cities, and the other one administered for the townships. I understand there is a proposal for Becker County to administer those township subdivision ordinances, in any case, the landlord would have to go to different places, and this, the county's zoning controls would stay effective in that two mile zone like they are today. And of course, then the other issue is, is that for taxpayers within the township, not only do they continue to have to comply with the city's subdivision controls, but they need to finance the, you know, the fees charged by Becker County to administer the subdivision controls ordinances. All of that leads me to a conclusion that, you know, we should make another effort to, to prevent that from happening, and prevent is the wrong word, to persuade their townships not to take that step. I was asked, I believe at a meeting, to provide a summary of what the options were for the city, and so this letter does allow the separate option of a, what's called a joint planning board, there's a separate statute on that, the joint planning board can be created by a resolution of any of the governmental units, so the township could make a resolution, it presented to be out here, the county could, and city could, and that would force the creation of a joint planning board for land use controls within the two mile zone, whatever townships were involved in that. So that joint planning board could be one township, in which case, the two mile zone would only be the two miles within that township, or it could be multiple townships, and if there are multiple townships, they have the authority to require that there be one joint planning board for all of the townships that are involved in it, composed of members equally represented by each township, the city, and the county, so for instance, if one township were to pass that resolution, the joint planning board would consist of a township representative, a city representative, and a county representative, and it would be members of the governing body, so it would be one of you that would be on that board. If there were more than one township, there would be a representative from each township, plus one representative from the city, and one representative from the county. In any case, if that occurs, the city will be a minority voice, that body would have to create its own competence plan, its own subdivision control ordinance, its own zoning ordinance, and then the city is required or authorized to administer that joint planning board and use control within the two mile zone, unless otherwise agreed, and so then, you know, that would depend on an agreement of all parties in that case to do something other than that the city administer. So for instance, you could, you could not agree that they would be administered outside of, and so you could then take the administration of that into the city administration office, but they would be administered separately, some of the subdivision controls ordinances. I think the biggest issue with that is just you're creating an entirely separate bureaucracy for, for planning and zoning within that two mile zone, obviously it's going to be substantial expense to it, and those bodies are required then to create their own ordinances, their ordinances have to comply with the same planning and zoning requirements that cities are required to, because townships are required to comply with the statute that authorizes city planning and zoning, county planning and zoning has a different statutory authorization, there is more, what would you say, less restricted, counties have much more flexibility in what they can do with their subdivision ordinances and with their zoning ordinances than cities or townships are authorized to do. So that comes to, I guess, the conclusion, unless there's some questions. To me, the proposal that, the proposed changes that we had thought about making in February this year are worth looking at, I'm not saying that there would be all and all of it, I think that it would be a good idea to at least invite the townships to participate in reviewing those changes, they may have, if they do participate, some other suggested changes that I think we should, we should look at. I think that it would be unfortunate for the residents of, not only in the two mile zone, but the city itself, you know, these things all have a potential for litigation, litigation is expensive, litigation requires taxpayers of both the city and the townships to finance that, it seems to me that it's worth it to try to employ that, and while we may not be optimistic based upon the responses of the townships in the past, I think it's worth another, another try, just so we don't end up with a situation where we have multiple subdivision ordinances within the two mile zone, or with a joint planning bureaucracy within that two mile zone. And so I, I think that the proposals that we put together in February this year are a good start, but they should be used as just a template, I know that Kelsey sent them out, those proposals about today, I assume you didn't have a chance to go through them, they're kind of complicated, but, but I do think they're good changes and we should take a look at them. And then, you know, as far as action from the council tonight, I'm not sure we need to take action, it seems to me that because these are zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances, zoning ordinances, they have to go through the hearing process at the, at the planning commission, that a place to start would be in a discussion with that planning commission about these, these proposed changes. Obviously, if the council wants to have some discussion, that's fine, but in any case, from the hearing perspective, it has to pass through the planning commission. So with that, I don't want to bore anybody too much more, if there's any questions that have to take them, otherwise I'll, I'll...
Any questions, Charlie?
Charlie, can you maybe explain what the difference between the zoning regulations to that two mile area versus the subdivision, because it is, it's a little bit different and tricky in terms of what we're talking about, subdivision versus what the zoning, who's got those, those issues?
Right now, within that two mile zone, the city's subdivision controls ordinance applies, and Becker County's zoning ordinance applies, so the city's zoning ordinance does not apply within the two mile zone, so subdivisions within the two mile zone have to comply with Becker, have to comply and do comply with Becker County's zoning, so for the issues as far as setbacks, and if you have to get a favor, so that you can have a, you have a conditional use permit, and that kind of thing, all of that goes to Becker County, all that Detroit Lakes does within that two mile zone now is reviews subdivisions of property, so a landlord who wants to split their property into more than one tract, more than the tract that they have, has to comply with the city's subdivision ordinance, and the city's subdivision ordinance provides different criteria, in some instances, it requires that that property be fat, so that from a planning perspective, we can have influence into whether there are things like streets dedicated, so you need to have access to pieces of property, so that utility easements can be provided for, and, you know, fundamentally, so that lot sizes, if we're talking about properties that are close into the city, are not so large that in the event those properties get annexed, it's going to be very, very difficult financially for those landlord to finance the special assessments that would take to extend water and sewer to those properties. The bigger the lots close to the city, the more distance there is between those lots, your engineer will tell you that, you know, per foot of sewer pipe or water pipe is more expensive, so the closer the lots are together, the less expensive the special assessments will be, and it doesn't mean you want people living on top of each other, but large lots within the two mile zone create a financial problem in the event that those properties are next now or the next forty years from now, and that's the idea behind municipal planning. So right now, the use of any individual piece of property, it doesn't have to, the city has nothing to do, but if you own a property within that two mile zone, and you want to develop it by building a house on it or something, you don't have to come to the city, you're not dividing the property at all, it's all, all you do there is go through the process with Becker County, under their normal process for whatever development in their zoning ordinance, but if you want to divide the property up, if you want to split it, that's where the townships or the city's subdivision controls ordinance applies. If we were to, and that would state saying, even if the townships adopt non-subdivisional controls, so you have the amount of the city's subdivision ordinance applying, maybe the township's subdivision ordinance applying, and the county's zoning ordinance applying, if there's a joint planning board, that body is charged with creating its own separate ordinances, they have to comply with Minnesota statute 462, so, you know, one, I guess, I don't know, if the townships under the assumption that they can just adopt the county's subdivision ordinance, they're not going to be able to do that, because the county's subdivision ordinance is not, is authorized to be much more flexible than what the municipal does. And so we are restricted by our state statute, and so do the townships and their subdivision ordinances, and so would the joint planning board, it's just that that body would have to create its own separate zoning and its own separate subdivision. I mean, you could look at it like this way, since we administer in a joint planning board, the city then would be responsible for administering subdivision and zoning, not only within the city, but also subdivision and zoning within that two mile zone. That a long way of answering the short question?
Yeah, it was. Any further questions? Further questions of Charlie?
Well, Charlie, you know, we've, we've been working on this two mile zone for many years, as you well know, and after this last meeting that Kelsey Clem and I were at, at the county board meeting, it, it's pretty well known that the feelings toward the city and our planning process doesn't mean a whole lot to any of them, and they're concerned about park dedication fees, lot sizes, required roads that they don't really think they need certain sizes, they're concerned about what happens with water and sewer when it comes off of the assessments, they don't recognize any of these, and, you know, we can, we can do all the work we want to do, but until we get the city council together with the county board and the township members to sit down and to agree to have a joint planning board, I don't feel any of this is, nothing's going to happen, because it's just kind of like the Hatfield McCoys, and you got one other family thrown in now, and it just isn't working out on it, and I, I think, jeez, do we need a mediator? council together with the county board and the township members to sit down and to agree to have a joint planning board, I don't feel any of this is, nothing's going to happen, because it's just kind of like the Hatfield McCoys and you got one other family thrown in now. And it, it just isn't working out on it. And I, I think, jeez, do we need a mediator? But I, I'm kind of thinking it's a lot like Westlake Drive. You have to, maybe have to, we don't want to spend the money, but we may have to go to court to get to where we have to be to do what we want to do on it, because they don't even recognize the planning commission, because we talk about making rule changes. They're going to say, well, there they go again, they're making a bunch of new changes. And, and, and just like putting gas on the fire for them. And I, I don't know how to get around that, but it's, it's been that way, but until we get the three groups together in one room, and somebody, whoever that person is, maybe God, to help us out, I don't, I don't know how this could, can work out on it, because we're just going to go back and forth and spend a lot of staff time, attorney fees, and whatnot to get to where we have to be. And I, and I don't know how we can do that unless Kelsey can sit down and meet with his counterpart at the county and see what can be done. But, but, but right now, there's, there's really no love for our process here at the city from the township people. And, and you say we just need one township to make this call, but, and I think, well, jeez, you would think we'd find one township that would maybe come and maybe ask for some help so we get something going, but we can't even get one.
Well, I'm hopeful, and maybe I'm naive, I'm right with that, but I'm hopeful that if they understand that the way they're proceeding is going to end up with their residents having to deal with two, it's, it's not going to get rid of city subdivision control. It's just going to add another layer of subdivision control on top of that, at best. Yeah, there might end up being litigation about that. I mean, I'm hopeful it isn't, but there might be. I can see a lot of areas where there would be things to disagree with. But I'm hopeful that if they understand that the city's subdivision controls aren't going away just by them adopting a subdivision ordinance for the township, that they will see the value of engaging in a discussion with the city about what the city's subdivision controls should look like, and that they would be a partner to it. I mean, the proposal or discussions that we had, that we had in February, had specific procedures where township officials would be involved in the process as well as the county. That draft of an ordinance, which may or may not be the final word, involves them. And what they were asking us for was, or what they were complaining about was that they were not involved. So those changes specifically get them involved. Now, they might want something different, or maybe they don't want anything to do with this at all, but I still think it's worth the effort. I agree with you, this is probably never going to be resolved until the city council and the townships sit down and can actually talk to each other. And I'm just hopeful that, you know, with this knowledge, they, they might see that point and, and come to engage in a discussion. I don't think we should decide beforehand what changes, if any, should be made. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we go adopt the draft that Kelsey and I put together. I just think that's a start. If they would actually look at it, I think they could see that there's a lot of things in there that are done in response to concerns that they've expressed, and that are in there to accommodate those concerns. Now, they might think they're not enough, and I think we should be willing to talk about that. But first of all, it's trying to get them to come to the table to talk.
So, Kelsey, if the council at some point decided to follow the recommendation, the check, or the procedure, the process that Charlie's outlining, what do you see as the process?
Mayor and council, as City Attorney Ramstead mentioned, if we were going to consider those changes to subdivision ordinance, it has to go back to the planning commission, and a public hearing has to be held at the planning commission level. Ultimately, then, that recommendation would come to the city council for two readings. You know, I think the comment at the CDC meeting yesterday about getting the planning commission up to speed is a good idea. We do have some new members on the planning commission, and I think before you have a public hearing, you would at least have an informal discussion with the planning commission at a planning commission meeting, just as a discussion item, to get them up to speed. I think on the memo that Charlie presented tonight, if you want to get into the weeds of the actual ordinance, certainly do that with the planning commission. You know, part of reviewing the changes that are being proposed in the subdivision ordinance, why that's beneficial is, it helps you understand the comments or some of the objections that the townships had, because each of the changes is a reflection of one of their comments. So it's, it's helpful to understand the, the total scope of the issue if you review the draft subdivision ordinance. So that's the only reason why I would encourage the planning commission to actually go through page by page what the proposed changes are to the subdivision ordinance.
So, we don't necessarily need to take any action this evening, correct? There's a lot to digest here, and some of the council members maybe haven't, you know, had all this sink in quite thoroughly enough.
I don't think that we're asking the council to take any action tonight necessarily. I do plan to attend the planning commission meeting, assuming that I can get myself on the agenda. And again, for what, what Kelsey mentions, which is basically this discussion that I had tonight with you guys, and like Kelsey says, perhaps get into the weeds a little bit about this draft that we had up in February. Again, I don't necessarily think that that draft is the, the last version of what the changes should be. But I, but, yeah, I think that right now, all that needs to occur is that we start having the discussion in the planning commission, and then if we find the planning commission has some suggestions, council members can certainly have suggestions, you can read this, Nick. And, you know, I think we should reach out to the townships and ask them to review it. They might put it in the circular file, but at least we should ask, and see what that goes.
Dan, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I think this is an important topic, you know, it's, it's about subdivision, it's about growth of the city, it's about how, how things develop and how, how things plan. It is something important. I've been in some of the contentious meetings where it, it's raised voices and, and everybody goes away not real happy. I think this is an opportunity that we can drag this out into the public realm, and, and let's have these conversations. And, and if we need to start that at the planning commission, I would say we send this down to the planning commission to, to start reviewing that process, get the planning commission up to speed on this, have council members get, get involved and get active in, in knowing this, the subdivision ordinance, and, and let's, let's start that process and get it out there. So that's what I, I believe is the way we should...
So, Charlie and Kelsey, your intention would be to bring the planning commission up to speed on these issues. You're not going to ask them to make any necessarily, make any recommendation, you're just going to get them up to speed, right?
Correct. They, they, we, they would need to hold a public hearing before they can make any recommendation anyway.
Okay, right.
And so the idea would be to, to just introduce them to this at their next meeting, get them thinking about it. Chairman Winter can decide whether he wants to have a public hearing in May or June on this, and I think that all depends on how it goes. And again, I'm, I'm hopeful that not only you, the, the city council, but also perhaps, if we're lucky, members of one or more of the town boards might actually look at it and might come to engage in that process.
Okay, so, why don't we just have Charlie and Kelsey do that and, and table any further action for this evening? Is that fair enough? Okay, should we move on, Dan?
Sure. Item C is consideration to second reading of adoption of ordinance 478 for annexation of a 4.82 acre tract of land at Detroit Township zoning RA Agriculture Residence District at 26484 North Tower Road. This is the Arvig property. Larry, do you have anything that you need to add on this?
No, it's very straightforward. This is second reading of the ordinance annexing that property. This was at the request of Arvig. They needed to hook up to city sewer and water.
So, yeah, again, CDC looked at this and recommends approval of second reading of ordinance 478, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 478 annexing a 4.82 tract of land at 26484 North Tower Road. Discussion? Roll call, vote. Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Siriksen?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dolman?
Aye.
Motion carries, second reading is given, and ordinance 478 is adopted.
Item D is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance 479 amending the subdivision ordinance of the city of Detroit Lakes relative to allowing developers to construct public improvements in subdivisions. This is second reading. Again, this gives private developers the ability to construct roads and infrastructure improvements in their own development as per city specs and, and requirements. CDC recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 479 amending the subdivision ordinance, allowing developers to construct public improvements in subdivisions. Discussion?
I've, I've got a question. When they do their own roads, they're responsible for snow removal, repairs, and everything, is that correct on these ends, when they do that, or?
No, that's, that's not, Kelsey, you take it.
Look, Ron, in this case, they would be constructing public improvements, the sewer water at streets to city specifications, and they would be paying for it instead of having the city bid the project and paying special assessments. They would pay for this directly, but it would be built to the city's specs, and then once the project is done, it gets turned over to the city and it's treated just like any other public road. You're not talking to private...
Okay, so it's not like the Golden Bay where they have their roads and all that, then?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Further questions or discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Dolman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Mark Siriksen?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
The motion carries, second reading is given, and ordinance 479 is adopted.
Item E is consideration to a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Ridgeview First Edition at 4, or 2447 Long Lake Road, Becker Development LLC. CDC reviewed this and recommends approval, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Ridgeview First Edition at 2447 Long Lake Road. Discussion? Do a roll call vote. Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Siriksen?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dolman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item F is consideration to a resolution approving preliminary plat of Brisland First Edition at 1800 County Road 131, Pelican River Heights LLC. CDC reviewed this and recommends approval, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution approving a preliminary plat of Brisland First Edition at 1800 County Road 131. I know there's a citizen that here, would you like to speak to this issue? Ma'am?
Hello, yeah, I guess that's what I am, I'm here for. I live out on Big Floyd Lake.
Would you mind going up to the podium so everybody can hear you using the mic? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Jones, and I live out, live out on Big Floyd Lake, and this was just brought to my attention two days ago, that there, that you're on 37 acres of land, you're putting in two apartment low income and then low income housing, and...
The city's not doing that, ma'am, the developer's doing that.
Well, aren't you, you guys are in sh, what is your...
We're just approving the plat of the tract...
Well, how about let's not approve the plat?
What's that?
Because I don't think there should be anything out there. We shouldn't be, we, we, let's just put middle income houses out there, not low income houses. We're right by the lake, for heaven's sakes. You're just right down from the lake. We, you know, the people across the street in there, you know, I have the, the March 25th, you know, on my phone that I was reading, and, and there's a lot of people that are objecting to this. And then I just heard about it, and I'm objecting to it. So, we don't want this to go forward, those of us who live out there. Doesn't, doesn't anybody care what the residents want? Isn't there someplace else you can put this?
I'm sure the council will take your comments under advisement.
Well, who makes these... I'm, I'm here, I'm here to just re, you know, to reject this.
Okay, thank you.
Well, who, who do I, who do I talk to about that? What, what, what are steps I can take? Like, do we get a petition going out there?
So, Charlie or Kelsey, our action tonight is approving a preliminary and, a preliminary plat?
Yeah, and she would not approve it.
So, what would be any grounds for us to deny the preliminary plat? It would have to be something that's wrong with the plat, right?
Well, there's a lot of things wrong with the plat. It has housing, houses on top of houses, and two apartment buildings where...
I'm calling on the city administrator right now, can you just wait a minute?
Oh, I thought you were talking to me.
No.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, you know, Larry might remember the dates better than I do, but, you know, it's probably been over a year ago when the owners of the property requested annexation and rezoning, and again, there was a public hearing process, two readings of the ordinance approving the annexation and rezoning, and now they're coming with a plat. So then basically, what we're doing now is reviewing the plat and seeing, does it meet our subdivision ordinance requirements? And again, that's gone to the planning commission, there was a public hearing on it, would have been last month, would have been the public hearing at the planning commission, and they reviewed the plat and recommended approval, basically saying that the plat, including the lot sizes, meet the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, so...
So there's, there's no technical grounds for us to not approve it, correct, in your opinion?
In my opinion, no, because it meets basically the requirements of our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance. The developer has met all the requirements of our ordinance.
Okay.
So, question, Your Honor? Or am I too early?
Pardon me?
I just got a question for clarif...
Go ahead.
Just want to ask a question for clarification. So, Larry or Kelsey, do you remember, Brisland told us what the approximate price of the houses that he's going to build out there, but I can't remember what it is now. It seems to me it was over a couple hundred thousand dollars each. Am I right on that?
Oh, no, you're wrong.
Well, I'd like to hear it from the people that really know.
I would too, I would too.
That is, that is the price that they have mentioned, 250 to 275,000 dollars would be the price of those houses.
That's what I thought, Larry, thank you. So, what are the, the lot sizes are?
The lot sizes are a little bit smaller.
Seventy by a hundred. You don't build a 250,000 dollar home on a seventy by a hundred lot.
Oh, yeah, you do. But anyway, sorry, Your Honor, I shouldn't respond. But anyway, we were talking, Kelsey, lots are a little smaller, 75 by 100?
Seventy.
75, right?
They vary.
It does vary.
They vary. And again, the idea with just a little bit of a smaller lot size is they're trying to keep the assessment cost down or the infrastructure cost down, but basically, this is going to look very similar to the Pelican River Heights subdivision that they built a number of years ago by the VOTAC, same developer, same builder.
But there's certainly no grounds to deny this plat on the basis of someone's income or the value of the houses, correct?
Correct.
Well, in the, in the big thing of this property, it's a property that we need for homes for affordable housing. That's the, one of the reasons why this property area out there was chosen, and along with the apartment house, they're going to have, they, they're getting TIF dollars so we can have income-based apartments to help people out for housing. If somebody else out there from the Lake One to buy that, they could have certainly gone up and bought those, that area.
I certainly didn't know it was for sale, or I don't think really anybody else did about this project. This is just coming to light for all of us.
But it is feeling a big need for income-based housing and affordable housing that we need right now.
I'm sure you can...
This property is also on our comprehensive plan of high-density residential.
So, Kelsey, is this what you were speaking of earlier, all these subdivision ordinances? With the townships not agreeing because you guys are land-grabbing past your city limit?
Actually, no.
The city limit is North Tower Road, and 131 is not city limits.
But city limits changes, changes all the time.
So, this is what you were talking about as far as the subdivision ordinance and the feud with the townships?
No, because this is in city limits. So, that's not what we were talking about. What we were talking about before is when the city can enforce a subdivision ordinance within two miles outside of the city limits of the city of Detroit Lakes.
Which is what you're doing.
No, because it is in city limits.
North Tower Road is the city limit.
This property was annexed to the city at the request of the property owner.
So, what do you propose? Like, you mentioned earlier in your little speech, creating a joint planning board with the township in the city?
This has nothing to do with that because it's already in the city.
Well, what steps can be taken so that this...
I don't think the council has any choice.
Besides litigation?
Pardon?
I mean, you said besides litigation, what is there? Are there any amicable steps that can be taken to resolve this?
You know what? We've noted your objection. We've given you plenty of time to express your objection.
Yes.
And we appreciate you coming here, and thank you.
Well, and I just want to say, too, it's interesting that all this stuff develops when all the snowbirds on the lake, you know, are gone. And this is just reaching the Big Floyd newsletter and the website today.
All right.
So, you'll be hearing.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the table. Is there further discussion by the council?
Your Honor, I feel I need to say a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, this, what did come before the planning commission on March 25th, all notices were properly given as required, and we did have comment from the people in that area. Not all of them objected, but they did have questions which we answered to their satisfaction. I would guess about half of them had an actual objection, and the others were just looking for information. Some were actually wondering if the sewer and water was going to come up 131 so that they could connect. Secondly, the planning commission looked at this, unanimously approved it, and in any... It was just unanimously approved, no objections, and they looked at it very carefully. Secondly, in looking at the price of the house, it's probably going to be two more assessment years before my house would reach a price that would actually qualify in this area. So, I certainly wouldn't care... I mean, I would characterize the housing going in this area as affordable, but certainly not low-income. Not ostentatious, but certainly well within the purview of what would be considered any other residential neighborhood within the city. So, I seconded it. That's... I'll be done now, Your Honor, but this just makes tons of sense to me.
No, I appreciate... Those are good comments. Thank you, Dan. Further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Sierikson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahlman? The motion carries, and preliminary plat approval is given to the Brisland First Edition at 1800 County Road 131.
Your Honor, I got so excited. Could I say one more thing on this, as determined whether it's passed or not?
Yes.
But one of the suggestions that came up yesterday at CDC was that we look at this area. It's all zone RMA, I think, is the title, so it would be...
Yeah, zone RM, multifamily current.
Yeah, multifamily. But in order to avoid the situation we ran up to into what would be north of 34 and, you know, by the tech there, we want the planning commission to take a look at zoning the platted part R2. So, I'm hoping that probably in May, we could bring that to the planning commission. I just want to make sure everybody understands that we're going to take a look at that.
Yeah, and Larry will talk to the developer about that, too.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan. Chairman Josephson?
We are down to item G, consideration to a resolution approving final plat of 839 South Shore Common Interest Community Number 87, first supplemental common interest community plat. This is adjusting some of the garages in the back lot from their original plan. Larry, you want to give a little bit of an update?
Yes, essentially, this is a revision to their common interest community plat. They had originally planned to do two large garage buildings down in that lower area to the south, and instead, they are going to do 14 individual garage structures. And the planning commission reviewed this and recommends approval.
Thank you. CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution approving the final plat at 839 South Shore Common Interest Community Number 87. Discussion?
I've got a question. Now, these garages are also going to have, like, houses inside of them? Are these there?
No.
Not on these?
These are just storage buildings, garages.
No, these are just storage buildings that are associated with the homes in that planned unit development. They need to be owned by somebody who owns a property in that development. So, it's a storage building.
Storage only, but no housing will be able to be put into them, then?
Correct.
Is that the way it's zoned, then? So, that won't happen?
No, these are just storage structures. These are not living quarters.
I lost track where I'm at. We got a vote?
Yeah.
We've got a motion and a second, though, right?
Correct, yep.
I'll do a roll call vote. Dahlman?
Aye.
Bokey? Matt?
I stepped out and I can vote, sir.
Okay, Mark Sierikson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
The motion carries eight to nothing. Without objection, I'd like to jump ahead because we've got a couple gentlemen here for item 8B, which is the Ojibwe Forest Rally at Detroit Mountain Recreation Area, and it's on the... Public Safety Committee Chairman Winner, if you would, take that one item, please.
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. Well, item B is the Ojibwe Forest Rally wants to set up shop at Detroit Mountain this year. They've got a pretty cool plan where there's a circuit that they'll do on the last day. It's a great way to get... Oh, you can see it on there. I'll let them explain it. But they'll bring people to Detroit Lakes. They've gone over a plan that's been looked at by city staff, and it works pretty well. I think one thing we need to do yet is draft an agreement with the city on different legal issues, but it looks good to go, and I'll let... Where is he? Charlie, I guess, take it, but at this point, he can explain what's going on with this.
Okay, Charlie?
I may not be the right one to explain what's going on. I've just been tasked with putting together an agreement that would involve Detroit Mountain Recreation Area, the Ojibwe Forest Rally, and the city approval, essentially something like what we have done in the past on event agreements. It will contain a variety of clauses requiring to have insurance, requiring to identify both the city and Detroit Mountain Recreation Area for any sort of accidents, and place upon them responsibility for safety, not only of their participants, obviously, but also of any spectators that would come. But as far as what we can, you should ask for them. The only comment that I would make is that since the agreement hasn't been drafted yet, you don't really want us to approve the agreement, doesn't technically, doesn't exist.
Okay, all right. Well, Eric, if you could come up here. Well, we can approve the concept here, or...
You can certainly give them permission to use it, subject to a written agreement that we will have drafted.
Thank you, Charlie, and I would like to hear from Eric here on how this is going to go, so thank you.
Just couldn't see him. Yeah, sorry, I was hiding. My name's Eric Nelson. I'm the chairman of the Ojibwe Forest Rally. A lot of you guys have seen me in the past when we did the street stage down along the lake for, oh, four years, I think it was. This idea came about a couple of years ago when I twisted Jeff's arm to get us to go out to the mountain and use it for our headquarters, which our community has absolutely adored going out to the mountain. They love using that facility. So, of course, naturally, we sort of tried to take that idea and expand on it, and came up with this. And what we would like to do is bring the last two sections of our race, like we used to do down along the lake. We want to bring it out to the mountain. What we've noticed with our sport is a lot of the spectators like to have something more... Something where they can sit and watch, and they don't have to go out on the forest and deal with the bugs and the mosquitoes and the wood ticks and all that kind of stuff. So, that's what we're trying to do. Bring something back into Detroit Lakes and provide an atmosphere where they can see the competition, enjoy the sport, but still be, you know, stationary and see everything from one spot. What we kind of have planned is if you follow the red line from the bottom center, all the way kind of circling around there, that's the competition section. The purple area right in front of the lodge, if you're familiar with the mountain, that's where we would like to have spectators. Couple of things we've done there is the chicanes, which would be barricades, up just directly... I don't know my directions on the page here, but just straight up from the spectators there, that's designed to slow the cars down. Not that they're going to be going very quick on something like this, anyway, but that's designed to slow them down when there's spectators around. We will also have barricades in front of them, and one of the things we're trying, we're in the last stages of getting put together, is we're going to have a very large, probably 15, 20-foot video screen up there, so we know that's where people will be congregating around, so we can kind of keep them away from a spot if we don't want them to be there. We're going to have video crews out there that'll be streaming directly to the screen to try to keep everybody where we want them, but still give them the best show possible. So, I guess it's just kind of the next evolution of our sports and our evolution in Detroit Lakes.
Thank you, Dan. Or Eric, thank you. So, any further questions of Eric? If not...
Well, if not, then, Your Honor, the Public Safety Committee did recommend approval of this, and I move that we do approve the request to use Detroit Mountain Recreation Area for the Ojibwe Forest Rally on August 29, 2021, subject to the development and approval of an agreement with the city.
Is there a second? Motion's been made seconded to approve the use of the mountain for the Ojibwe Forest Rally, subject to entering into an agreement for the insurance. Discussion? I'll do a...
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Matt.
Jeff sitting back there, but I'm assuming this is amicable from Detroit Mountain as well?
Yes.
Just want to check.
I'm comfortable with it as well as the PMR.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Further discussion? A roll call vote. Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Sierikson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
The motion carries, and we are... You were done, right, Dan, on the CDC?
I'm done unless you want to take some time.
So, we're going to move to the public... We're going to work to the Public Works Committee Chairman.
Say, Mayor, we do have the happy newlywed or engaged couple, I guess you'd say, who want to speak to their noise permit request under Public Safety.
Where's that Public Safety Department work?
So, we'll move to the Public Works Committee Chairman Sukie, if you'd take C first.
Is that it? That's not it? That's the wrong one, isn't it?
Public Safety.
Or is that the wrong one?
Public Safety, yes, Public Safety.
So, without objection, we want to jump to, what, item 8C?
8C.
8C, you're on.
So, instead of Madeline, we're back to Dan.
Back to me. Okay.
Dan, can I jump in just for a second? We had a little discussion about this at the Public Safety Committee about... Basically, if you look at the application, they're looking at having a backyard wedding, and one issue I ran into is started looking at the noise ordinance, and the noise permit, we are familiar with our noise permits, those are technically can only be issued to liquor establishments. So, really, what we need to do here is to issue a noise variance if they want to exceed 10:00 p.m. per the ordinance. And here's my hiccup, and fortunately, I haven't had a chance to talk to them about it yet. It requires notification to the adjacent property owners. So, you could certainly consider approving the gathering permit tonight, but if they want to do something that violates the noise ordinance after 10:00, I actually have to go through a notification process before the council can do a noise variance, not a permit.
So... When's the wedding? So, would we have time to do that, Kelsey?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have it in May.
Well, I think that's what we have to do, but we can approve the gathering permit tonight, right?
Which is fine. The discussion we had at Public Safety is still germane to the issue. You know, they've got plenty of yard for this, but we did take a look at this. I think the council should be aware that we're probably going to see more of these come forward this summer. There were several weddings canceled or postponed last... Or celebrations, at least, postponed last year due to the pandemic, and Kelsey has informed us that there will be... There have been further inquiries. But having discussed this and looking at the use of the property and the fact that it's a one, you know, one-evening kind of gathering, the Public Safety Committee did want to move forward with this and recommended approval, and I so moved that we approve the gathering permit for Clayton Kuhlmeier and Kayla Wagner, so that they can have a backyard wedding celebration.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Discussion? Discussion?
Yes, the Public Safety Committee did recommend that an invite to your neighbor's mic be helpful.
Good idea. Further discussion? Roll call vote, Dahman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
The motion carries. Is there anyone else here that I missed it? I know the gentleman's here from the, from the franchise for Midco. What item is that? Can we take that one as well? That one's item seven E. Ron?
Okay, I've got that, here we go here. Okay, item seven eating is consideration to a secondary reading for adoption of ordinance number 475 for Midco cable franchise agreement. That's, that's the first motion, and I so move for this is a secondary reading for ordinance 475 for Midco. Then we also have another one after that, so the first one is for the ordinance 475 Midco Cable. So, move make a motion there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to give a second reading and adopt ordinance 475 regarding the Midco Cable Franchise Agreement. Just a reminder to the council, this requires a four-fifths vote. Discussion? Roll call vote, Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahman?
Aye.
The motion carries by over a four-fifths vote.
Actually.
Next one is a four-fifths.
Yeah, there's two, there's two motions you gotta do, one is the adoption of the ordinance, and the second one is approving of the summary.
So, so the next motion is for the summary of ordinance 475 Midco Cable Franchise Agreement publication purposes only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made seconded to approve the summary that's printed regarding ordinance 475 Midco Cable Franchise Agreement for publication purposes. Discussion? Roll call vote, Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Yep.
Dahman?
Aye.
Motion carries, summary will be published. And I don't think there's anyone else now, right? So, Madeline, we are in fact back to you.
Okay. Just gotta get back to. Item A, discussion concerning the addition of a multi-use trail to the Fraser Street project. As you may recall, we did a little bit of discussion about that at last month's council meeting. This continued the discussion, John thinks he's got it worked out. John, do you want to just mention a couple of things about what you're working on as far as that goes?
Certainly, as long as the city administrator lets me borrow his mic. Yeah, staff and myself met out there, and we looked at some of the discussion that we had last month, whether we should be on the north side of Fraser Street, whether we should go halfway and cross. Long story short, we ultimately circled back to the original alignment, which would be on the south side of Fraser Street. That posed the least amount of, of issues, it provided the greatest ability to, to provide a wider sidewalk in that area. What we're landing on, and I've vetted this through some of the staff at MINDOT, and I think we've got a path forward that would probably result in a, in a nine-foot wide sidewalk from McKinley to, to Washington. So, with that, I would point out, though, that does require us to eliminate parking on all of the south side of Fraser Street. Previously, we were gonna continue to have parking from, from the node to Washington. We would be eliminating the parking in that area. It's something the hospital's actually requested that we do, and we didn't initially, but now we would be eliminating that parking, so.
All right, no formal action needed, John? Tonight, we don't.
No. Item B, consideration to a resolution establishing Forest Street as a municipal state aid street. John?
Fairly routine, what, what I'm asking the council to approve is adding Forest Street in its entirety to our municipal state aid system. In effect, what I'm trying to do is just generate additional state aid dollars by some unused mileage that, that we can designate. It'll, in theory, at least, generate some more municipal state aid funds, and if we were to ever reconstruct Forest Street, which it's on our five-year plan, we would have at least the option to use state aid funding to fund a portion of that construction.
Public Works moves to establish Forest Street as a municipal state aid street.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded approving a resolution establishing Forest Street as a municipal state aid street. Discussion?
Mayor, a quick question if I could, I, I see on the resolution it says Forest Street, Rossman Avenue to Washington Avenue. Didn't we already do Washington to Lake Avenue and rebuild that? Or do you have to establish the whole street as a state aid?
I have to establish the whole street for continuity, but you're correct, we already did one block. Thank you.
Further discussion? A roll call vote, Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Yeah, we've got Kerry Johnson from the chamber.
Oh, yeah, Kerry. Why didn't you speak up, Kerry? He's sitting over there, and what item is Kerry on the agenda? Is it the seven D, right? Purchase agreement on the?
Seven D, yes.
Yep.
Okay, the item seven D, consideration of purchase agreement for, with Detroit Lakes Regional Chamber of Commerce of the amount of $35,000 price, and also for easements, and also will help them with other expenses such as tree removal or helping them with their sprinkler systems. Kelsey, do you have anything else to add on that?
No, Mayor and Council, this was, again, there's two items on the agenda that were kind of remaining, left over from last month regarding the museum project. So, one of them was to basically enter into a purchase agreement to acquire the land that the chamber owns, so we can accomplish that parking lot that was shown on the site plan for the museum last month.
Okay.
Okay, the committee recommends approval, this is an ISO move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the purchase agreement with the Detroit Lakes Area Regional Chamber of Commerce. Discussion? Roll call vote, Dahman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I think we got everybody. Sorry, Kerry.
So, now we're back to item C, consideration to the request from Kendra Moan to waive the fee for the band shell rental on April 30th. She wants to have a band concert there for her homeschool band. It will be open to the public, and the Public Works Committee had considerable discussion about this, and we moved to waive the fee for this band shell rental.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the request from Kendra Moan to waive the fee for the band shell rental on April 30th. Discussion?
I, I just want to mention that we, we normally don't waive fees, but these are little tiny kids. And, so we're gonna make an exception, so that's, that's why that's happening.
What a nice thing to say, Ron.
If it was for you, bad break, we'd probably raise it up.
Further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, Dahman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item D, consideration to scheduling an informational meeting for improvements to the Willow Springs subdivision on May 25th, 2021. And we move to schedule that informational meeting.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to schedule an informational meeting for improvement to the Willow Springs subdivision for May 25th, 2021. At what time would that be at?
We're thinking five thirty, yep.
At, right here at the Holmes, at the Holmes there, too.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm assuming that would be kind of a hybrid meeting then, or?
No.
Reason why I'm saying no to that one is, just like we've done for our other improvement projects, it's so hard to have the exhibits and stuff on display on a hybrid, so at this point, I would advise not doing a hybrid, but, but the option to that, just like we've done in the past, if anyone has any questions and they can't come to the public meeting, call John or call me, and we can figure out a way to meet with them, so.
Okay, further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Yep.
Dahman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is consideration to the memo from the Public Works Director requesting authorization to purchase a John Deere 6155R tractor. Long story short here, we need this, it was on the budget for next year. He was planning to lease something from, or hopefully get something from MINDOT that could get him through this year, that fell through. The best thing to do is to purchase this now. It, at least, we could lease the tractor, but it would be a five-year lease, and it wouldn't be worth it, so Heidi was supposed to work the figures and come up with a plan, yes? All right.
Done, done deal.
So. Public Works moves to allow authorization to purchase that tractor.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the request to purchase a John Deere 6155R tractor for the Public Works Department. Discussion? Roll call vote, Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item F, consideration to a resolution accepting a report and setting a public hearing on the improvements of concrete curb, gutter approaches, and sidewalks for 2021. Public Works reviewed this, and so moves.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution accepting the report and setting a public hearing for our curb gutter approaches and sidewalk improvements for 2021, and I'm assuming that meeting would be in May. Discussion? Roll call vote, Dahman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winter?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G is the City Engineers Monthly Project Status Report. Prior to that, I will ask John to explain some more about our roundabouts Sure. and the safety and the public crossings.
So, everybody will be exhausted after I talk about South Washington, so with your permission, I'll maybe zip through the other projects first.
Sounds good.
If that's okay. Just a few, I'll, I'll try to be as brief as I can here on, on some of the project updates. Westlake Drive, there's, there's always something to talk about there. The good news is, we were issued a, a court hearing date for the condemnation proceedings relative to Westlake Drive. That hearing's scheduled for May 10th, so shortly thereafter, we should have the documents that we need to record that would ultimately allow MINDOT to authorize us to begin bidding the project, and so the challenge with that is, May 10th, I'm glad we got a date, it's later than I wanted. If you start following the math forward on that, we start bidding about the middle of May, open bids about the middle of June, we have to go back to MINDOT for some further review and authorizations to award the project. You know, we're gonna be starting to get into July before we have a contract, and I want it to be starting construction by the middle of July, and at this point, that's gonna be a, a tight squeeze. Likely will be closer towards the end or later part of July. If we get much later than that, I'm gonna have some pretty serious nervousness about getting that project complete this year. So, as of right now, that's still the plan and the course. This condemnation proceeding, just so everybody understands, this is the avenue that we're, we're having to currently utilize to advance the project. The quiet title process is still very much happening, but there's been some delays on that end, and eventually, the, the condemnation and the quiet title process will meet again and hopefully be, be resolved at some point later this year. So, that's sort of the latest on that project. Westlake Drive, the next phase from six to the Pelican River, we have that scheduled for next year. The county did receive a, I think roughly a $12,000 grant from SHIP to do some further analysis on the alignment of that trail. If you recall, there's been plenty of debate about, should the trail stay on the lakeside? Should we cross at six and, and bring it over on the railroad side? The intent of this grant is to vet that a bit further, have some public engagement, and also look at a few other elements related to the trail. So, we'll be doing that over the course of the next few months with the county. The Berquist subdivision, we talked a little bit about that tonight. All signs point to that the developer is moving ahead with plans, I haven't seen them yet, but ultimately, I would expect that I'll see some plans for review and probably some construction later this year. Again, that'll all be privately, privately done. We'll skip South Washington for the moment. Long Pine Estates, contractors indicating they're gonna start on the street construction, which that's what's left out there, probably next week, barring weather, and then we'll finish that up, the underground utilities are already complete. Willow Homes and Fraser Street, our large reconstruction project for this year, those plans are substantially complete, been submitted to the district for review, and now they're down at MINDOT Central Office for review. I'm hoping that we can begin bidding that project sometime in the early part of May, as long as we get all the other ducks in a row, the council's already authorized that, bidding that project last month, so. And Lake Forest Seventh Edition, that project has been awarded, and the contractor actually is looking at starting as soon as they can there. We're just getting, waiting for the plat to be signed, and then we can proceed with that. So, I would expect some activity to start out there, probably in the next two to three weeks at the outside. So, that brings us back to South Washington Avenue. In general, the contractor would like to start the remaining work. Most specifically, that, that work is down at the North Shore Drive intersection. The last week of this month is what they're, they're sort of targeting. So, leading up to that, a few things that we need to talk about, and I wonder, Kerry, did you get, find that email? Okay. Got a little bit of a summary that we can look at here, keep me on track. The first item that I want to discuss is, this is the opportunity. If you recall, we didn't, we weren't able to get the permanent pavement in the central island of the North Shore Roundabout last fall because of the snow. So, they put some temporary concrete down. I want to at least point out that I'm not convinced that we're gonna get the effect that we probably all hoped for with that, that compass rose. It's, it's neat, it's cool, but the contrast between the colors that I'm seeing, when, you know, pavements get dirty, they get worn, things like that, it'll look great on day one and probably for several weeks after that, but as you get dirt and you get tire marks and you get things like that, my concern is, you know, over time, this sort of loses its luster, and it, it's a pretty substantial cost to us, so if we want to proceed, that's certainly fine, the contractor's prepared to do that. If not, now is the time for us to say, yeah, let's, let's not. We're looking at, if we eliminated that, at about a $21,000 savings, so I'm, I'm sure there'll be some discussion ensuing on that, but that's item one. The rest of these are, are a little bit more specific towards some of the comments, concerns that have been raised over the last several months relative to the, the roundabouts. One of the comments has been directed at pedestrian safety and the crossings, or the lack of definition of where the crossings are. What we could do is we could put traditional crosswalk markings in if we, we elected. If you recall, at the North Shore, or at the Willow, at both roundabouts, the plan was to use colored concrete, two different colors of colored concrete to sort of define the crosswalks. It's certainly been suggested, and I, I think there's some credibility to that, that, you know, that colored concrete just doesn't pop like you would think it would. Yeah, you can see them, but they're not, certainly not as defined as what you would see for traditional pavement markings. So, the solution, at, at Willow, we could put down traditional markings that get ground in to the concrete, they would go right over the top of our colored concrete that we have in at that intersection. The good news is, down at North Shore Drive, because of the weather, we weren't able to get those in, and the plan was to cut the pavement out and place the color down this spring. We could simply avoid doing that, put down traditional crosswalk markings if we wanted. Would have some short closures at Willow, unfortunately, to do that, and I do mean short, they would probably just close one leg at a time, put a barricade up. Half hour or less, they're gonna get each leg done, so a little bit of traffic interruption there. Probably looking at around $3,700 to, to put those down. Onto the third item, one that's been talked about on and off again for a number of months, is the addition of LED embedded yield signs. If you recall, a number of years back, MINDOT had some of these out on Highway 59, and Willow, there were stop signs. They certainly are very, very visible, they do grab your attention. I will agree with that. There are yield signs up now, so this is just simply an enhanced sign. Debatable whether, you know, this is gonna have any real effect or not, but it would certainly maybe encourage traffic to yield. As far as cost goes, we're looking at about $2,000 a sign, so if you want to do all seven approaches, you're looking at about $14,000 plus installation time by public work staff, unless we, we hired it done. And then the option to that would be adding a, an advisory placard onto that sign post, that same yield sign post, which right now has the yield sign, the roundabout symbol, and this would be a third panel underneath there that just says Yield to Left, really aimed at trying to educate drivers that that's what you do when you pull up to these things, is you're yielding to the left. You don't necessarily care as much what's going right, you're yielding to the traffic that's coming to the left, and that, in my opinion, is one of the, the common issues that, that some drivers struggle with, is understanding that you're yielding to that traffic from the left. I have seen the compliance, I think, improve since we put up the dynamic message boards and have done things in the paper. and have done things in the paper, I think that's certainly helped. These could go up, they could be temporary, pretty nominal cost, about a couple hundred dollars a sign, so. One more comment on the yield signs. We could do these to all the approaches that are involved with the roundabouts, or we could consider just doing it to, you know, Willow, if you felt like, you know, that was a bigger issue. So, one way to just mitigate the cost, because again, all seven are looking at about $14,000, so. And then last, a suggestion that we've come up with that could be considered, they're probably not the prettiest things in the world, but would be some temporary raised pavement markers. These are a plastic, effectively, marker that go down on the ground with an adhesive. They're designed to be temporary in our climate, because the snowplows will make very short work of these, but you would put these around the inside, or right behind the curb on the central island, so around the center island, aiding and just identifying that this island is there, and encouraging drivers to actually drive where they're supposed to. They're about four by four in size and raised just slightly, perhaps enough to maybe encourage people to go around them instead of over them. Relatively inexpensive, about 500 bucks to put these around both of the roundabouts. And again, I stress, those will just be temporary for a season, so.
So, can a truck go over those things, John, if they have to?
Yes.
Cut the corner?
Yes, yep. They're only about three quarters of an inch high, and they're just kind of domed. If you drove over them, you'd, you know, rattle your teeth a little bit if you were a car, a truck, no.
Okay, so, was there a recommendation from the committee?
Well, Public Works spent a lot of time on this yesterday, and we actually recommended all three of those options.
Okay.
The lighted signs, the yield to the left, and the little domes.
And the markings on that, and the pedestrian markings?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
If we need to make a motion, Public Works makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Yep, can I, I just want to point out too, I should have mentioned this, being this is a county road, or at least these intersections are jointly owned, I would need to run this through Jim at the county. I have mentioned it to him, he didn't have any initial comments, but I'd be asking the county to participate in the cost and splitting these, this stuff up like we usually would. I haven't got that approval yet from him, so.
So, our motion would be contingent on that, right? Okay, is that okay, Madeline?
Well, I don't, well, the contingent part, we have to do something.
Yeah, either way, if they don't do it, we'll have to do it, yeah.
We just have to do it.
So, we don't want to make it contingent, we want to go ahead and do it if the county doesn't participate, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, I think that's what Public Works.
Everybody clear on that?
Yep.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote, Zeeman? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, we've already got yield signs up there, right? And where are these auxiliary yield signs going? Are we putting them, so we got stacked up, or we're replacing the ones we've got there?
Replacing the ones that we would have there.
And then we're going to hang another sign underneath that, and then another sign underneath that, so now you're hiding pedestrians behind that sign, that they can step out, or how does that all?
So, the yield signs, where the crossings are for the pedestrians is actually in front of the yield signs. So, right now, what you have out there, and I should have taken a picture, right now, what you have is a yield sign, same yield sign that we'd be looking at, they just don't blink at you. You have a yield sign, and then you have the white roundabout sign, and that's how it exists today. So, it would be the same thing, except we'd have the LED embedded yield sign, and you'd have the addition of a third sign panel, relatively small, but a third sign panel that says Yield, Yield to Left.
So, then my next question is, now we've got these three stacked up signs on my left, and as I'm approaching that intersection, I'm supposed to yield to my left, I've already got my eight pillar, or whatever you want to call it, in my vehicle, that sometimes obstructs that car coming from the left, now we've added more?
These would be to the right.
Those would be to the?
These would be to, your yield sign is to the right as you're coming onto the intersection.
But if I'm coming in perpendicular to, so if I'm yielding to my left, this sign is going to be obstructing that car coming from my left, which I'm supposed to be yielding to, and I'm trying to enter that intersection paying attention only to the left, and you're putting more barrier in that spot. I don't see this as being a good solution for eliminating any traffic issues down there.
Sure.
You've got to find some way to call people's attention to the fact that they have to yield to the left, they have to slow down, and they have to go around that roundabout. I mean, that's the biggest issue here.
Can the yield, can the yield sign just say Yield to Left?
What?
Can the yield sign itself just say Yield to Left without adding?
No, there's pretty specific standards that we have to follow for the yield signs.
Further discussion?
Just one thing, I'm trying to visualize this a little bit, but the yield sign would be at a spot before the car enters the intersection, correct?
It's correct, right where they are now.
So, you don't actually yield to cars until they're in the intersection. I mean, the car, the car you're trying to yield to has to be in the roundabout.
That's correct.
Coming around, you don't wait for somebody approaching from the other side of the yield sign to leave, you wait until they're actually in the roundabout.
You yield to traffic approaching from the left, that's in the roundabout. So, traffic in the roundabout has the right of way.
I'm thinking you should be able to see it, because they're already in the roundabout, that's just where I'm sitting. Yeah, so the sign shouldn't interfere.
Further discussion?
So, I go through these roundabouts, I go through two of them in the morning and at least one in the afternoon, so I've navigated these quite a bit. And there are some issues, but they aren't to the point where we need to spend, what, 22, whatever, how many thousand dollars on creating other issues that we haven't even figured out if it works or it doesn't work, because we don't even have six months hardly under our belt on these, and it's...
We've already had accidents on them already.
How many?
What, two to three, you said? I heard originally, at the paper, I originally said five, you said two to three last night? Accidents on the roundabouts?
Right, I pulled the data off for the previous 12 months, and John, the roundabout opened in September, end of September?
The Willow one opened right around the 4th of July, at least in part.
There were three roundabout-related accidents at the Willow and Washington roundabout. One of those three was a semi that took out a light pole just because his tail end was red and too parked behind, so there were two vehicle accidents at Willow and Washington, one in February and one in March.
And none at North Shore Drive?
None at North Shore Drive.
Okay. Further discussion?
That was done later on North Shore, though.
I guess a couple of questions are on this, is, Mr. Pratt, can you clarify, and I'm in favor of removing the compass rows on the North Shore. I know the plan last fall was to remove that intersection and raise that lip up higher. If we forego the compass rows, does that circle stay as is?
No, we're going to have to do something, the contractor kind of missed the mark in haste on that, I'm going to call it the curb geometry, and so that's going to have to get corrected. So, no, we're not foregoing that.
So, since we are correcting that, what height will that center be when he is done, or when they are done?
So, to most directly answer your question, I, right now, the islands were intended to be two and a half inches above the concrete surface, or above the street surface, which was actually at the outside of any sort of recommendations we could find. At this point, I want to take it up to about three inches, but the other, and probably more effective impact is, we're going to steepen that curb face, and so that transition for that three inches isn't going to be spread over quite the distance, it's going to be a little bit more abrupt, so it isn't so gradual to come up and over that. And again, what I'd point out is that the line I'm trying to walk with these is, yes, I agree that we should, you want them up as high as you can to encourage people to use the intersection like they're supposed to. At the same time, I have to keep an eye on, trucks do have to drive over these, and I want to avoid making them too abrupt or too steep where you start having load shift issues in semis and things like that. So, I think three inches is where I'm targeting.
Okay, I guess looking at that, if they're two and a half now, and we were going to put a three quarter inch dome or reflective on there, that's already at three and a quarter inches. So, I guess, I'm no expert, but I would encourage you to look at, maybe it's three and a quarter that we leave them, maybe it's three and a half. There again, if it's steep, I'd leave that up to you. I think if we raise that, I think that's going to take care of the problem, because even at three inches, that's going to make you spill your coffee after going for an alignment, especially if, you know, I don't know if the Willow, if that option is there to raise that or not. I drive these four times a day, to work, home from work, go home for lunch, eat leftovers, go back to work. So, I drive both of them four times a day. I, my personal opinion is, I think we're making an issue out of something that's not there. I think that with the public safety in mind, it's something that, yes, we need to be aware of and looking at this, but with basically two accidents, chief, one being a semi that took out a pole, two accidents, to me, that's not enough evidence or facts to jump right to flashing signs and everything else. I guess my vote would be, look at, let's look at a stepped approach. I'm in favor of putting down the white lines in case the Beatles ever come back, they could do Abbey Road right there, I mean, I think that would make sense, but let's start with that and see how the summer goes. These are not foreign in other towns, Fargo's got a ton, Bemidji's got a ton, St. Cloud's got a ton, the cities are all over. I think it's, it's, let's take a stepped approach at this rather than trying to solve a problem that we don't even know if we have yet. So, I guess that's my vote, what I would look at, chief, in your opinion, being the safety expert, is, do you see an issue down there? I see a lot of your officers sitting in adjacent parking lots, watching these operate during the times. In your officer's opinion, or yourself, is this something that is a safety concern?
Well, you're right, we have staff down there a lot, especially in the morning, because of the quest of John and Kelsey, and the officers have found that initially, there was a lot of driving over the middle of the median, that's been pretty much the common. They feel that a raised median, that what's brought up a little higher, where the cars just can't speed over at about 30 miles an hour in the intersection, I don't know. They also said that a lot of the industrials they see don't actually go to where the colored concrete is. So, I kind of tend to agree with your plan, they delineated those crosswalks better, when people saw clearly where are they supposed to cross, and help with the safety. So, yeah, I'm not opposed to, you know, there at all.
Okay, I guess that's what I would look at, is, let's look at a stepped approach to this. You know, let's start with the crosswalk delineation there, if we need blinking signs, let's see if it's a problem this summer. Let's not just jump and spend $22,000 for this. The other thing, looking at this, is, this kind of sets the precedence. You know, if we're going to do it at one roundabout, do we have to do it all roundabouts? And do we need to look at, you know, a, excuse me, McKinley and, excuse me, not McKinley, Roosevelt and Willow? That's a high traffic, a lot of pedestrians there, so if we have issues down with the roundabout, do we need to put blinking signs there for continuity? To me, it just opens up, and it's, we're seeming to jump to a big conclusion here when we don't know a problem.
Go ahead, Ron.
Matt, back in, a few months back, when you wanted to put a roundabout at the Holiday Gas Stage intersection, you were all excited, because we had seven accidents in nine years. We've had three accidents now in six months. So, I don't know what the difference is from your math from when we were going to, you were going to try to do a roundabout at Holiday Gas, but no, but we're having accidents down there, we're having trouble with people crossing the locks with their kids, with strollers. I've had older women from the housing, a dozen of you talked to me about, because I'm on that board, they can't get across those streets, they're scared to go across them. They're dangerous, and we need to do something, and the committee has looked at this, we had a long meeting with this, and this is what we feel we need to do to protect people from being injured or having any more accidents down there.
I guess, I would have to say that I don't think that the roundabout of North Shore is going to be as much a problem, because there's going to be the plaza on one side, there's the, there's the curves, or coming up the middle with lights down the middle of it. So, I don't really think North Shore is going to be such a problem that we need flashing lights. But honestly, at Willow, I'm concerned about that, and I'm concerned about it primarily because we get huge summer traffic, and those people come down, I mean, when we've got young people cruising, cruising the drag, that's what they used to call it in my day, cruising the drag, those kids aren't being real careful, and a lot of those people aren't used to roundabouts. And I just want to, I don't want us to be in a position where all it would take would be one major accident, and you people will think that $14,000 was nothing. One major accident at Willow.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to weigh in?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to just do the crosswalk markings. So, that's what my motion is, to amend the motion.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I would second the amendment.
Okay, so, we're going to vote on the amendment first, and if the motion gets amended, then we'll vote on that amended motion, right? Anybody else want to chime in? We've heard pretty much everything, haven't we?
If you're just going to take out, I mean, if all you're saying in this is that you want to go back to nothing except painting the crosswalks, I'm going to vote against that. I'm not going to necessarily, I would support you if you went without the lights, but we need those little yellow things at Willow, because he's going to raise the concrete maybe down at North Shore, but I think we need those little yellow deals at Willow. I see too many people driving over that.
And we need the lights there, too.
I can see this meeting going till like 11:00 PM tonight.
Oh, man, my estimate's already out the window.
So, is there an amendment?
So, I'm going to go ahead and call the question, because I think we've thrown everything out that's possible here. We've got an amended motion, and that is to just do the crosswalk markings. So, I'll do a roll call vote, Zeeman?
No.
Lai?
No.
Sukie?
No.
Winter? Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Sierikson?
No.
Boke?
Aye.
Dahlman?
No.
So, the amended motion fails, so we're back to the original motion, and I'll call the question on that. Dahlman?
What, okay.
We're back, we're back to the original motion where we're going to do the whole package.
The whole package, both north and south.
Yes? Boke?
No.
Mark Sierikson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Was that yes, Wendy?
That's a no.
That's a no, okay.
I said a no.
Josephson?
No.
Winter?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Lai?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, thank you for a good discussion. Anything else on the Public Works?
One question, if I may, Chair. Mr. Pratt, going back to seven, looking at Willow Homes, Frazee Street, I know that the Westlake Drive is pushed out, like you say, probably till end of July, are we going to try and get Willow done prior to beginning that project, or what's the timing of that?
My short answer is, I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe. If things lined up, yeah, I would consider reshuffling it, at least getting a portion of Willow done and get out of there, but I'll have to wait and see how the timing works out.
Thank you.
Anything else, Madeline?
No.
Okay, we'll go to the Finance Committee, Chairman Zeeman.
Yeah.
Okay, items, say.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Ron. Kelsey and I were talking, are we clear that in that motion, are we eliminating the compass rows? Because that was kind of a blended item, I mean.
Eliminating what?
Is there a motion for that? Can we just take an opinion?
Yeah, I'm just...
Everybody that wants to do away with the compass rows, raise your hand.
Okay, I think that's a majority, okay? All right, Ron.
Okay, item seven, a discussion regarding the South Shore Park funding. I'm going to just call on Kelsey to give us a quick update on that. You all have information here, put it at your desks there, about a little fundraising they're going to have here.
Mayor and Council, I think there's some hard copies there on your desk of the flyer that we're using to basically launch our fundraising campaign for South Shore Park. You should also have a copy of that in your email. At the Finance Committee, we just wanted to give a little update to the Finance Committee about where we're at with the project, what the fundraising status is. There's a majority of funding sources that go into this project. It's pretty remarkable that when it's all said and done, you'll probably have close to a million dollars into that park, but there's, we're using park dedication fees, we're using... But there's a, we're using park dedication fees, we use some food and beverage tax, we did get a grant from the DNR for a hundred ninety thousand dollars. We have some just general property tax, park budget money in there. But at the end of the day, we're about two hundred thousand dollars short of basically meeting our goal to complete the playground and the sport court. So there is a subcommittee of the Park Board that's been meeting to basically go out and try to get some donations, writing grants to different foundations, making other requests. That flyer that was on the, on the desk is going to go out in the mail to a lot of addresses, several hundred addresses on this kind of south side of Detroit Lakes, we think would be some of the, the users of it. We're also making different presentations to service clubs, looking for donations that way. So right now, they're, they're just slowly trickling in. We hope to, our goal, like any fundraising project, is to get done quickly, sooner than later, because we'd like to get the project, get the playground equipment stuff in this summer, get the sport court done this summer. So we really want to try to wrap up the fundraising as soon as we can. Any questions about?
So we don't have any formal action to take, correct?
No, it's just to let people aware that they're going to have this fundraiser. And as you see in the picture there, you can see that there's items that you can find what the costs are and they're going to have a plaque to put your name on it and so forth too, so it all works together on that. So it's just, just to give you more information on it. The next item, seven B, it's a consideration to accept the American Legion Camp Brown Annual Financial Statement and the Independent Account Report on, on agreed upon procedures for ending the year December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. The, the committee looked over this and the ready marks, the report looks good, so we move that we go ahead and accept it as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the American Legion Annual Financial Statements and the Independent Accountant's Report. Discussion? Roll call vote, Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Siriksen?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is seven C, it's a consideration for museum, museum operating grant. You've got information in the packet and I'm going to have Kelsey or Heidi to go over that with us, what, what's going on with that agreement?
So Mayor and Council, again, this is one of the remaining items to do with the museum project. It really, the purpose of the agreement is to figure out how the expenses, the operating expenses of the shared facilities between the community center and the museum, how those are going to be split and who's going to provide them. The basic of the main contract is a long term. It's a twenty-year term and then five-year automatic renewals thereafter. But really, it's designed that if you look at the exhibits, those exhibits are intended to be flexible and those are intended to be reviewed annually. So that way, if you determine that one entity or the others may be using a higher percentage of the expense, or maybe there's a different way to provide a service, those can be adjusted then in those exhibits. I think we'll just leave it there unless.
Okay.
Okay, so the committee has reviewed this and we go ahead, so move that we go ahead with operating agreement.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the museum operating agreement. Discussion?
Would this be very similar to like the golf course or the mountain operating agreement or this is separate because it's tying it to a separate entity?
This is, this is fundamentally an agreement between the community center and the Becker County Historical Society for operational expenses, operational responsibilities of that shared facility. This does not change the management agreement that we have with the community center for the operation of this building.
So it's an operation rather than a management?
Right.
Thank you.
It's an operating agreement. It really is between them, but because we own parking lot and we own the entrance portion of this building that's going to be part of the shared facility, we are involved in moving this and being tracked.
Thank you.
Further discussion or questions?
Well, I just want to say, and, and as you look at that report here, you'll see in the back the percentages of what each is going to pay and is, take a look at, it's pretty interesting.
Further discussion? I'll call a roll call vote. Dahlman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Mark Siriksen?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, the next, next item, we go down to item seven F, it's a consideration, the first reading of ordinance number four seventy-six for Arvick Cable Company franchise agreement the committee recommends and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give first reading of ordinance four seventy-six regarding the Arvick Cable franchise agreement. Discussion?
I, okay, go ahead. I, I was just going to say that I asked Heidi, how much money do we get from the franchise fee? And last year, we, from Arvick, we received seventy thousand dollars, so the fee does come in handy.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call vote, Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Siriksen?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Motion carries. First reading is given to ordinance four seventy-six.
Key, next item, seven G, it's a consideration to reschedule the public hearing for five PM on our next council meeting, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, on a proposed project and the issuance of industrial development revenue bonds. This is at the former Altec Building. The committee's reviewed this and would go ahead and so move to have this public hearing.
There's a second. Motion's been made and seconded to set a public hearing for five PM on May eleventh for a proposed project and issuance of industrial development revenue bonds. Discussion? Roll call vote, Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Siriksen?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Ron?
Yes, I do. At, at last month's meeting, we had a discussion on the amount of money that the Becker County Museum was going to get. And after that meeting, when it aired on TV, I had some people call me because they, they, they heard that we were going to be giving seven hundred thousand dollars to the museum and they were wondering what, what was going on with this. Well, the majority of this funding for, for, for this project is for the parking lots for visitors, for the DLCC and the museum, and this money is virtually all coming from our food and beverage tax. And we've got some new members on the council here now, but back in November two thousand ten, the citizens voted to have a one-half cent food and beverage sales tax for the next twenty-five years. And we started collecting these funds in July first of two thousand eleven. Now, since we started collecting these dollars, we've so far, at the end of two thousand twenty, we have taken in over three million, nine hundred thirty thousand, three hundred and one dollars. And these dollars can only be spent for flooring rush and AIS mitigation, in other words, for clean lakes, can only be spent for our local bike trails and it can only be spent for city-owned parking lots. And I just want to go over here, like, so far to date for flooring rush, we've spent over two hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars from that sales tax for fighting flooring rush and, and other lake problems that we have there. We're projected by the time two thousand twenty-five comes, Heidi projects that we'll be spending over four hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars for these noxious weeds. Also on bike trails so far to date, since we started collecting this, we've spent over a million, ninety thousand, three to nine dollars for bike trails in the city of Detroit Lakes. And we're at a million now, but we're projected by the next five years in two thousand twenty-five, we will be, have spent additional two million, so it'll go to three million, one thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars. And the part we're talking about are city-owned parking lot properties. And since, since this sales taxes have come on, the city has spent four hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars on the Veterans Memorial Parking Lot. We spent a hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred dollars on parking on Washington Avenue. We have spent seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars for parking at the Detroit Mountain. We spent three hundred thousand dollars on the Boys and Girls Club parking because that, that land is owned by the city. And now for what we're talking about, the museum parking here, we're, we're talking five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for total, for the parking. And, and this is for the Becker County Museum parking, but it's also used by the DLCC because we all know how much shortage parking they have in this area. And we also have spent a hundred thousand dollars on South Shore Parking Lots. And in two thousand twenty-five, we're going to be spending four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Washington Square Mall Parking Lot. And then also, we're going to, it's projected out that we're going to spend another four hundred fifty thousand dollars for funding of parking lot improvements for the DLCC that'll be done at a later date. So in reality, and the money that we're talking about that we gave to the museum, it was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the food and beverage tax for the parking and then also the city utility gave fifty thousand dollars of working kind and they also gave fifty thousand dollars for utility work and, for cash from the Public Utilities Commission. So that was a total of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But in reality, we didn't do anything more for Becker County Museum that we haven't done for all these other organizations that I just mentioned. And the, and the reason I, I'm bringing this up tonight because the museum is close to finishing up on their six and a half million dollar fundraising project. Last month when I was here, I said they still had five hundred thousand dollars to go. They're now down to four hundred thousand dollars. So they're close to reaching their total goal of their fundraising. And as of this morning, they had the good news of that, but also Becky told me that they've sent the bids out and they're hoping to have a lot of companies working on bids for them, but on April twenty-ninth, that's a Thursday, the museum will open and award those bids and we're hoping that it's going to be a good turnout. And, you know, one thing about this museum is that we're very lucky because we're going to have it here in Detroit Lakes. There, there was one other town in Becker County that wanted this really, really bad. So we're going to have a great museum and our cost to them has been very little because for this six hundred fifty thousand is no more than what we've done at a lot of other places. So in reality, we're getting a heck of a deal to have a great brand new museum with a science center, which is going to be very unusual for other museums that you go to. So I'm saying if you'd like to help the museum with the remaining four hundred thousand dollars, Becky and her staff, they're over there every day, just go over to the Becker County Museum and say, here's, here's my check for five thousand, five dollars, whatever it is, I want to help you so you can reach your goal of paying this off. And I just, I just wanted to bring that up and let them know that we as a city support their, their works of making a great museum.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Do you have anything further on the finance committee agenda?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
Okay, well, with the public safety, Dan?
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Got a couple more things. Item A is a resolution to amend the fire department fee schedule. Basically, this adopts a DNR rate change. Public Safety Committee recommended approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amendment to the fire department fee schedule. Discussion?
We were not able to call now after we called out the nail or renew our contract. Oh, okay, I guess, can we? Can we table that motion, Your, Your Honor?
We'll, we'll just table it till next month.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
The only other thing I would ask is if, I know it's getting late, but it, I think it'd be good if we could hear from Chief Todd and Chief Swanson on how things are going with the police and fire department, especially with the new building, so.
You go ahead and remind me to wake up a little bit.
You got to love Ryan, he always says what we were all thinking. So the, the majority of my work efforts are towards the new building. Obviously, we're coming into the home stretch. Monique Johnson had given us a substantial completion date of September, or excuse me, April nineteenth, which is next Monday. It's kind of a floating target because there's so many trades that are trying to finish up, but this week, there's been major progress in that furniture is being delivered and assembled, so we have a pretty high percentage of furniture that's already set up, particularly in the offices, the records area and the patrol work area. So that's really exciting to see. There is some painting going on down in the lower level. I know we were planning on doing a tour tonight, but I think that was before the meeting reached marathon status, so if you don't want to do it tonight, I completely understand and I can accommodate you guys whenever you'd like. So if you do come tonight, we have to come in from different directions because they're painting the stairs, so you can't actually walk down the stairs inside. We'll have to come in from the ramp and then also from the main level, but it's coming together really good. The officers are getting very excited. We've kind of got a moving plan formulated on how we're going to attack the move, doing it in staged increments, so we never drop a service, you know, at one location or the other completely. We'll, we'll try to blend it over very reasonably. So we're excited and we're thankful and I can't wait to show it to you guys. Any questions?
Thanks, Chief. And if anybody wants to get a, a personal tour, they can just call you up and we can make an appointment to.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Swanson?
Good evening, everybody. So on the fire department side, we've been, we're actually very busy. So it was kind of like we talked at our meeting, nobody really wanted to see the snow, but on our side, we did. You know, the relative humidity was actually at a very low rate, so we were running a lot of grass fires. It's kind of as we put in the, the pay per hour, we sent out our first round of paychecks and was actually quite astonished, you know, with the amount of calls we've had and the volume that, we're hoping that that budget slows down a little bit because it's going a little bit faster than we were predicting, but we're already at a, I think at today, I mean, this morning, we had three calls. So we're at like a hundred and eleven calls already for the year, so which is way above target, stuff like that. On the other hand, we did just have another member leave the department, so we're down to twenty-three again, even after, you know, accepting the two on as full-time membership. So we are putting out applications again. Hopefully, you know, you know, we're looking for people that are, are, are here to stay for safe. You know, we're not looking for people that are in transition, you know, I'm here staying with my parents, going to move on to college next year, stuff like that. We're looking for people that want to, you know, get into the community, have jobs in the community, you know, live here, be like, you know, that this is their town. So if anybody knows anybody like that, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out how do we find these types of individuals because at the end of the day, it, we need these services and if we don't keep getting volunteers, then it just makes it harder and harder and eventually we got to go career, which is a big issue. And I see the head of the Finance Committee is shaking her head because that would not be very good on the tax base, but, so if anybody knows anybody, have them reach out to us and we would love to, to take a look, so.
So Ryan, what's the full complement, thirty?
Thirty, yeah.
Okay.
So we need seven more, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Chief Swanson?
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Dan?
That's all I have.
We'll go to the liquor. Okay, we'll go to the liquor, gambling control.
We're going to jump into the meat, the meat of the agenda here, so get comfortable. Looking at this item 9A, consideration of a temporary expansion permit for Hub 41. I'm gonna call Kelsey on this, and Kelsey, if you can combine item 9A and item 9B, we'll vote on it separately, but talk about them concurrently.
Mayor and Council, unfortunately, I don't have my papers in front of me, but you should have the actual application in front of you with a map. If you remember last year, when COVID came out, and they were allowing basically restaurants to only be serving outside, we had a flood of requests. We actually were out contacting the liquor licenses about who would want a temporary expansion permit. We haven't done that solicitation this year, but we have had Hub 41 and BRIG come forward and ask for the same permission that they had last year, because again, they're seeing with COVID, people still want to eat outside and dine outside. So Hub 41 is basically the, the grass area out in front of their patio, and then BRIG, there's a small area kind of in the sidewalk in front of their current patio that they're requesting the, the expansion permit basically allows them to serve, it's an alcohol license issue, it allows them to basically serve alcohol on that expanded premises. They would have to rope in that area like they did last time, to identify the expanded premises.
Thank you. After discussing this at liquor gambling, we make a positive recommendation to consider the temporary expansion permit for the Hub 41. And I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a temporary expansion permit for Hub 41. Discussion? Roll call, vote. Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Sierikson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 9B, consideration of temporary expansion permit for BRIG, Taps, and Tastes. We discussed, discussed this, and I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a temporary expansion permit for BRIGs, Taps, and Tastes. Discussion? Roll call, vote. Dahlman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Mark Sierikson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Anything else, Matt?
Just a note of point is, next month, we are gonna be talking about, discussing the permit to consume and what that looks like, if we wanna keep going on the same path, or if we'd like to change it or bring any recommendations to the council. So nothing else, Your Honor.
Madeline, I believe there's an item on the Public Utilities Commission that needed to come before the council.
There is. This morning, the Public Utilities Commission reviewed the two bids that were submitted for Westlake Drive Underground Utility Project, and moved to award the project to Arvic for a price of $405,815.10. And I move that we accept that bid.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the bid from Arvic for the Westlake Drive Utility, Underground Utility Project.
Question, what is the scope? Is this where the orange paint is out there from?
This is the question, because they're now.
Legion, or from Legion, or from Washington all the way to six?
Talk about the scope of work?
Yeah.
Uh, Legion six.
Okay.
Further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Sierikson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
The motion carries. I don't believe there's any other items on the agenda. Just a reminder to Jamie, Ron, and Dan Josephson and myself, that we have to be at the, are we at the city council chambers, or are we at the county?
City council chambers.
Okay, on April 27th, for the Board of Equalization. The joint government meeting dates are there, the council meeting dates are there. Anything else from the city staff?
12A, Mayor?
Pardon?
12A, the emergency declaration.
Oh, I missed that. Consideration to the resolution extending the declaration of emergency. Kelsey, do you wanna make a couple of comments regarding that?
Yeah, I, I think the only thing I'd add on here is, again, would recommend to extend that declaration of emergency consistent with what the governor's declaration's still in effect. The only caveat is, is I think we have one more planning commission meeting that's via Zoom that the notices have already went out for April. But I'd say after that, starting in May, we move all of our meetings at least back into a hybrid mode, just like we've been doing here at the city council. We, we only have a few committees out there that are still meeting completely virtually, so I think migrate those at least to a hybrid model. Either we'll do those here based upon the size, like the planning commission's a pretty big size, we might have to do that here. Park Board's smaller, maybe we'll just do that in the council chambers. So we'll have to, staff will tackle the technical challenges with that, but I'd like, my, my suggestion or recommendation would be at least moving to at least a hybrid model, starting kind of at the end of the month, for everything.
Is there someone that would make a motion to extend the declaration of emergency and also to make all of our meetings, hybrid meetings, starting in May?
So move.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution extending the declaration of emergency and that all of our meetings moving forward in May will be at least hybrid meetings.
Yeah, Mayor, I emphasize at least. I mean, we have some committees that are, are meeting completely in person, Public Utilities is one of them. They have enough room to spread out in the council chambers, so that's working all right. But the main thing is, take those ones that are all virtual now, and at least transition them to at least that hybrid model.
And this group's all together now, tonight, for the first time in a long time?
And I would, I would keep our, probably our, at least our hybrid option for council meetings for a while yet.
So I'm gonna do a hybrid, or hybrid, a roll call vote here. Yeah, it is. Zeeman?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Mark Sierikson?
Aye.
Bokey?
No.
Dahlman? The motion carries. Anything else from the city staff?
Two announcements. We do have quite a few positions that are open at the city, so if you know anyone who's interested, look at our city website. We also have them posted on Facebook, or they can certainly call the city offices. We have full-time and part-time. We have a full-time accounting position in, at City Hall, liquor store clerk position, sports arena maintenance is also, just went out to advertisement. And then also, I think Sean left, but his administrative assistant is, is also retiring, so we have that posted. And of course, those part-time positions of, we mentioned the fire department already, but liquor store parks. And I really, really, really need a pavilion attendant this summer, so that's a lot of weekend evenings. So that's the stat announcement, and then, of course, be remiss in not mentioning